Welcome to the Cupertino Planning Commission Meeting of April 10, 2018. If you're going to be in the meeting, please have a seat and we'll get started. If you could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. And, you know, before we do, I just wanted to point out Senator Jim Bell said that his father always used to tell his children that the end of the pledge says liberty and justice for all. So I'd just like to point that out. When we recite that tonight, consider justice for all. Thanks. Okay, do we have roll call, staff?
Yes, sir. We have Commissioner Lou.
Present.
Commissioner Feng.
Present.
Commissioner Son.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Chair Takahashi.
Here.
And Chairperson Paulson.
Here.
All present.
Okay, the next item is the approval of minutes.
Oh, sorry. Chairperson, if I may, prior to you guys making the recommendation for the minutes, I want to make one typo correction to the minutes. For the minutes for March 27, on the oral communication, it was incorrectly noted that the speakers were speaking regards SB 25, it's actually SB 35.
Oh, okay, thanks.
And also for the February 13 minutes, we included a desk item for amended version that lists out some of the additional work program items that we had discussed and proposed for council for consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have, we better do two motions, I guess, for the two different minutes. Would that be the right thing to do, council?
Can you hear me?
No.
Oh, there you go. Thank you. That's correct. That would be appropriate.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Do we have any corrections to the minutes of February 13, besides those mentioned by staff?
No. So I move to approve the minutes with the corrections as noted.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. And that passes unanimously. Now we move on to the minutes of March 27, 2018. Do we have any corrections or discussion about those? Other than the title on the minutes, on the agenda?
There was the comment that...
Yeah, the one by staff, okay.
All right.
Do I hear a motion?
A move that we adopt the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And as amended with the corrections.
Yes.
Yes.
Let's vote. Okay, and passes four and then one abstention. Okay, any postponements? Okay. Now we have a period for oral communications. And this is a time when anyone can come and speak to an issue not on the agenda. You have three minutes and we cannot comment on or engage in discussion with you or take any action except in extraordinary circumstances. So you can say something, but don't feel like we're being standoffish, we're just prohibited from really addressing it until such time as it comes up on the agenda. Okay, do we have any cards for oral communications? Oh, and I forgot to bang the gavel. Oh, well. Sorry. Bang it here. There, while we're waiting. Okay, all, okay. No comments under oral communications. Any written communications? Okay, I did receive some emails about Agenda Item 1. Okay, consent calendar?
No items on the consent.
Okay. Well, we're moving right along after only six minutes to the Agenda Item. And I just wanted to tell you, this is a public hearing.
Chairperson, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Did you have oral commission card?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Oh, here we go. This would be, no, that's one, two, three. Oh, this is under Valco. Okay. Sorry. We do have a one card for Valco, and this is Kitty Moore, under oral communications.
Hi. I will mail, get you guys a copy of this letter that I've sent to the city. So I'm talking about the Valco SB 35 application, and I disagree with how the floor area was calculated for the office and retail portions. This is from their application. They include the entire floor areas for residential, which includes their parking and all their utility areas, but they don't include those for the retail and office parts. And that's a problem. If you look here, the way it's designed is the residential, actual apartments are on the perimeter of the building, and the retail, I mean, the residential parking and amenities are all on the interior. And so they counted all of that space towards the residential total. And then for office, they only count the office actual square footage, and they leave out the basements and the basement utility and, what else? The MEP, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing area. So that ends up being very substantial. It's 3.4 million square feet that didn't get counted for office. And then I did some alternative calculations, doing some different methods. And if you were to use the usable retail area, you're going to end up with, let's see, 56% residential and 44% non-residential. If you use the gross square footage, including parking and residential, and the non-residential, for both, being fair to both sides, you end up with 46 to 54. So I think this is probably going to end up needing to be litigated because the law doesn't define residential square foot adequately.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll get this to you so you can get a look at it.
Thank you. I should let you all know that under state law, this will not come to the Planning Commission, nor will it go to the City Council. It goes straight to staff for their professional view regarding building codes and that kind of thing. We do have a city process, especially this week, there's a charrette. So I would encourage you to come to our meetings. You can look at envisionvalco.org and see the schedule of events. So moving along to item number one, here's how it works. The staff will give their report, and then the commission will ask questions. Then the applicant will give their presentation, and the commission will ask questions of the applicant. Then you will have a chance to speak. And after we've heard all from the applicant, the staff, and you, then the commission discusses among itself and decides what to recommend to the council. So that's how it works. If you want to speak, I've got your card. You're welcome to submit a card if you haven't all done so already. Although I would encourage you, if, you know, you all have the same thing to say, that you have one spokesperson that helps us get home on time. And also, you'll hear a little tone. That means you have 15 seconds left if you speak. Okay, I'll start a timer. So that's how it works. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. It is item number three on the agenda. It's our first public hearing, but it's item number three. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening, everyone. Today we'll be discussing the, the scenic subdivision located at 1234 Scenic Boulevard. Application numbers should be TM 2015-01, TR 2016-28, NEA-2015-04. The project requests the tenant map application to allow the subdivision of three parcels into five parcels for residential and one common private street. Each removal permit to allow the removal and replacement of seven protected trees and the associated environmental review. Some background on the project. The project currently consists of three legal lots that comply with the general plan and land use and zoning designation. There are a variety of trees on site of size and health. The project does seek to subdivide the three parcels into five parcels. The property is currently bounded by single-family residential zone properties to north, south, and west, with the city-owned Blackberry Farm Zone Public Recreation to the east. Regardless of project data, the general plan conformance, the property has a general plan land use designation of low density, one to five dwelling units per acre. The zoning, the property is zoned R1-7.5, which requires a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet and a minimum, with a minimum lot with 60 feet measured at the front setback line. The total site is 1.045 acres, and the total lot area excluding private roads and dedications is 1.039 acres. The parcels sizes are indicated here, varying between 7,500 and 14,000 square feet. Parcel 5, again, is the private road that measures 8,264 square feet. This is the proposed map. Again, it'll create five parcels. All existing structures on site will be demolished prior to the recordation of the final map. Two parcels will rent Scenic Boulevard and will obtain access via, and two parcels, 3 and 4, will obtain access to Scenic Boulevard via parcel 5, which will be a private roadway. The parcel 5, again, is for access and has been designed to be consistent with the Santa Clara County's Fire Department standards. The project does show two-story homes and potential setbacks if those homes were to be built. They are shown for illustrative purposes, and the homes, of course, will be required to meet the development standards for a residential single-family zone. Because there are common areas that must be maintained by the owners, such as parcel 5 retaining walls, the property owner, property owners will get, agree, will be in agreement to, or participate in agreement to the common property to maintain all those facilities and infrastructure. In addition to the maintenance agreement that is required, reciprocal egress, egress, and parking along the common parcel will be required. This map is showing the potential conceptual gradient and drainage plant. There is a lot of sloping ability as part of the project. The slope will be stabilized with the combination of retaining walls and drilled piers. The height of each retaining wall has been limited to approximately 6 feet and will require to have landscaping between the walls. It's meant to help limit the impact of, you know, we didn't want a 12, 15-foot wall. The idea is to limit it, stack it for the benefit of the adjacent properties. The paved portion along the street right now is approximately 21 feet wide, with the new curb gutter and paving installed as part of this project, the site or the street width will be 32 feet, allowing for 8 feet street parking access along scenic, along the property line, as well as two drive aisles. This is showing the potential tree removals. There were over 100 trees on site, but because of the tree sizes and maturity, they were summarized into 73 by our consultant arborist. A total of 24 trees are to be removed, mostly because of their direct conflict with the building pads and driveways. Seven of the 24 are considered protected and thus require replacements consistent with the city's municipal code. The applicant has proposed replacements with 11 24-inch coast live oaks. Privacy plantings here are shown for illustrative purposes. As the project develops and the two-story homes are finalized and go through that process, the privacy plantings will be updated accordingly to mitigate any privacy impacts to the adjacent Comments received, staff received comments regarding the number of driveways, regarding the proposed on-street parking, and concerns regarding the width of the street, and concern about tree removal permits. Public noticing, the project was noticed with site signage, legal ad placed in the newspaper, notices mailed to adjacent property owners within 300 feet of the project, as well as posted on the city's official notice bulletin and posted on the city of Cupertino's website. Community outreach in November, the applicant had two meetings on November 5. That's a correction to the staff report. I had 4th and 5th. It's, both were on the 5th morning and afternoon. The applicant decided to postpone their item from the planning commission when it was originally scheduled in order to work more with the neighbors. They held additional community outreach on January 28 and February 10, as well as meeting with neighbors individually and corresponding by email with the neighborhood. Changes since November 2017, vehicle turnarounds on parcel 1 and 2 have been added. We did add that as a condition of approval. It was referenced in the staff report, but was not added. So there's a desk item essentially requiring the turnaround to be on the final plan. There's a continued effort to save tree number 39, which is the tree on parcel 5 for the common parcel, as well as guardrail along the common parcel to kind of make sure no vehicles fall off, as well as landscaping along the retaining walls and guardrail areas. The environmental review, the project went through an initial study mitigating negative declaration and was reviewed and approved unanimously by the Environmental Review Committee on October 19. Mitigation measures are proposed to be adopted as condition approvals. That's in the EA resolution, draft resolution. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve, adopt a mitigating negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Approve the tenant map application, TM-2015-01, with the proposed amendments, again, the turnaround, and approve the tree removal permit. That concludes my presentation. We do, as you mentioned, have the applicant and their team here. We also have the city's environmental consultant to answer any environmental questions as well.
Commissioners, do you have questions for staff? Okay, Commissioner Lou?
All right. A couple of questions. First of all, and I think this is one that Commissioner Takahashi shares. Could you bring up that original map of the parcel? You mentioned that there were, there are currently three parcels. I find only two in the city's GIS database. I was wondering if you could sort of highlight what are the three current parcels?
Yes. I'm just going to pull something. We're limited in our view that shows on there for TV purposes, so I have some extra slides to help with that. But if you go here, I'm playing it up, the current parcels are here, parcels are different from lots. So there is this, parcel here and here, and what they are drawing would be this here, this here, and this here. So 1, 2, 3. The 1 and 2 parcels are given access to 13A and 14A, and so that's how, there's three lots with parcels.
Okay, great. Thanks. Second question. You talked about a number of outreach, community outreach meetings. Do we have information on roughly the number of attendees at each of these meetings?
I will let the applicant probably answer that best. They have recordation of who attended and who didn't.
Sure. And then the third one is, in the staff report, there's a discussion around the efforts to save tree 39.
Correct.
As I mentioned, of working with the fire department and the arborists. I guess, looking at the map, tree 39 is sitting right in the middle of the cul-de-sac for parcel 5. Without, I'm just, because it talks about best effort, and I'm just sort of wondering, the staff have any expectations that this tree can actually be saved, given the current layout?
Working with, the applicant has been conducting outreach with their own team, as well as the fire department, and they'll probably speak to it best. We've also reached out to the fire department, but haven't heard back yet. It is a hard task, but the applicant has stated that they're willing to make that effort to try to maintain the tree. But as you mentioned, it is a difficult undertaking.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Feng?
Yeah, could I ask, I'm curious about the slope area. You can leave this map up.
Okay.
I'm curious, can you tell me about, about that? What is, what does that say?
It should be, it says quiet tidal area. So what it is essentially, when the map is done, so when, kind of big story for a small point, but when maps are recorded, there's oftentimes, you know, back in the day, they weren't as precise. So they wouldn't give you, it wouldn't be 101, it'd be 100. So over time, that kind of happens. So there's essentially unclaimed area. The applicant has claimed this, and they can confirm that, and they've gone through us, and essentially what they'll be doing as part of this project is stabilizing that slope. And this is probably the better one, but if you look here, and we do have their engineer here as well, I can speak into it, how they will stabilize, and it's also detailed in the environmental review, but a series of stitch piers, catchment fences to help stabilize that area.
Also, I'm curious, could you talk a little about the common arrangement? So the retaining walls, for instance, that are physically located on lot 4, all four of the homes would be, is that a common land, landed expense that's shared by the four homes?
Are you referring to parcel 4 or parcel 5?
Well, so for instance, all four parcels share the maintenance cost for, of the common road. Is that correct?
Correct.
And is that, is that true for the retaining wall and...
Yes, they require to maintain everything.
Okay.
Okay. And as kind of going into that, they will have access, kind of the reason why we put it in there was that they can actually have access to the turnaround area as well as the parking on that.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. There's two questions. One is from the feedback from our community. There is the two concerns. One is about density. The second is about the traffic. That's probably the catch my eyes the, in most emphasis. So could you just explain, based on the general plan, if we subdivide the parcel from 3 to 5, is parcel 5 can be defined as another dwelling house? If that's the case, is the, what's the public transportation go out? That's the one question. And it's fit with the general plan. The second question is about scenic transportation, and both chair and I, we have visited the site and also talked to the neighborhood there. So I think it's, there is some concern about the public, the street, the parking and the transportation, and the turnaround to the left. Is any cities have any particular measurement to reduce the traffic and dangers of the turn shaft left? There any concerns after, I think it's, we've been there last year, right?
Yeah, twice.
So it's after there, it's twice we visit there. Is any improvement or any discussion?
Well, so as part of the project, they will be required to, well, let me just do with the density first.
Yeah.
The project does meet density. It's five dwelling units to the acre, so they're proposing four. They have a little bit more than, over an acre.
Sure.
So they met that requirement. So in terms of land use designation, that, they've done that. And in regards to the driveways and the improvements, part of the project is, they'll be essentially providing improvements along Scenic Boulevard. They'll be increasing the payment area and the curb and gutter, so essentially widen the street and give out those turn spaces, as well as parking on street. We did look into, because it did come up, the drive aisles, like line of sight, and so city staff looked into that to make sure that it was, wouldn't necessarily be an issue in line of sight. And we did look at peak trips. This road would not, would be able to satisfy that demand. It's three or four peak trips in the morning and afternoons, something like that, additional.
The, one more last question, if you allow.
Sure.
So there's removing some trees. There's one, I think it's, there's, I forgot the number, but at least there's seven, the trees is protected, and the alternative to replace the trees. And any particular, the proposal to make sure it's, that tree is really treasurable is the one we visited site. Is any better alternative applicant or city can help?
Are you referring to tree 39? Or are you just referring to the trees in general? Are you talking about...
In general.
In general. So they are proposing native species, the coast live oaks, which is a lot better than some of the trees that they're removing, to be blunt. There's a lot of non-native species on there. So they are proposing coast live oaks to go along with, and I'll kind of show this one here. In terms of, kind of, I guess you're looking, again, maybe like monument tree, is that what you're thinking of?
Yeah.
Or, I don't know if they've done that. They do have the replacements as required, and that's what they've done so far.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm sure you have one quick question. With regard to parcel 4, and in the future, the rights of the property owner to add a secondary dwelling unit to that lot, how does that potentially play out from the standpoint of, given...
Sorry, if you, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
So clearly lots, parcels 1, 2, and 3, the primary residence occupies a majority of the lot. No real space for a secondary dwelling unit. However, parcel 4, one could argue there is some space for a secondary dwelling to be added in the future. How would that come about from the standpoint of approvals? Because clearly there's concern about density, and that's an opportunity to even add further to the density. And so just want to know how that could happen.
Right.
And what could happen, and what were the rights of that? And if there's any element that we're approving on the project today, that could limit that potential if we desire.
Well, so with second units in general, they are permitted through our zoning ordinance. We do have the accessory dwelling unit chapter. In terms of placement, that's probably a question better asked by the applicant, but what would trigger the city would essentially, we would reexamine this map to make sure all the intent, the infrastructure, the maintenance agreements, everything's still in place, as well as any drainage improvements that were triggered by this project. They've done a lot of draining plans. If they go over a certain threshold, they have to come back and reevaluate, and we have to re-review, and they may have to add more infrastructure to support additional impervious surface area.
So another question with regard to, the structures that are currently shown are notional, correct? At this point in time, they would come in the future with regard to the actual billing permits associated with each of these lots?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. And so what's there that's shown notionally, what does that reflect with regard to lot utilization and the general size of the structures relative to R1 zoning requirements?
Yeah, so, I'll give you a quick math, but they are shown meeting current setbacks, and that's the way they were designed in terms of size. The 7,500-foot lots looking at about 3,375 square feet of home, floor area. And the larger parcel can be about 6,500. However, the larger parcel, because of its slope, will be reduced through our, because essentially they had to follow our hillside subdivision, or not subdivision, but hillside development standard. So the house will be, become a little bit smaller after that.
Okay. So I guess the concern that I would have is, given these are notional, and the size of, for example, that's why I brought in the secondary dwelling unit, is how this actually pans out if this were approved as structured, and the size of the home that's drawn, that's illustrated on parcel 4, slope aside, they could build a much bigger house on that lot. slope aside, they could build a much bigger house on that lot than what is shown here, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what the square footage is, but it's probably bigger than.
Right. Okay. How common is it, and the answer might be very, to subdivide without necessarily the details associated with the structures on the house? So you're kind of making the decision that's kind of, notional is probably not the right word, but not necessarily the structures that'll end up on the actual parcels. Very common, somewhat common?
Yeah, that's fairly common through all cities is that you want to see an expression of some workable structures on site. But they're by no means restricted to that. When they submit building permits, then we'll figure out the details and designs and shape and setbacks and all that. But I think for the most part, Eric has mentioned that these buildings, at least for the most part, they meet their setback requirements.
Right. Okay. Some of them, yeah, the five feet on the two are adjacent.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I have a few. I spent a lot of time up at this parcel, met with the residents a couple of times, went out by myself, met a couple of times with one of the residents, talked on the phone with a few. And I was already to recommend that everything east of tree thirty-nine be donated to the city for parkland. You know, my grandparents donated one thousand four hundred acres to the city of Palo Alto for parkland. But what they did is they kind of donated some and they sold some and they didn't pay any income tax for several years. So I was considering, you know, asking the applicant, we consider the financial benefits of a donation. However, I had a talk yesterday with the city engineer. And he told me that since nineteen seventy, the crest of that, I guess you call it cliff embankment, has receded fifteen feet. So nature has a way of, as you know, eating land on the coast and on the sides of rivers, that kind of thing, and creeks just like this one. So the natural course of things would be for this crest to continue to recede further under the site. But the engineer told me that the city didn't really want such a donation because they don't want the liability of inheriting a landslide, okay? And I said, yeah, I understand that. You know, we want to save some money for City Hall rather than spend it on landslide claims and that kind of thing. So I have a question for the council. And that is that, let's say we approve this as it is, and there's a landslide in eighty years. Would the residents sue the city or file a claim with the city saying that, well, we approved this, but it was unstable?
So through that chair, I can give you some general guidelines and provide advice elsewhere, but your discretionary authority to either grant or not grant a permit typically doesn't attach to any liability on the part of the city. There's governmental immunities that protect your decisions as long as they're reasonable, based on the administrative record, based on findings and evidence in support of them, which is what you have before you.
Okay. So this no man's land, as it were, that was kind of claimed by the developer, they essentially kind of homesteaded it and paid for it by stabilizing the slope. Is that kind of basically the process?
Yeah, generally, yeah.
All right. Okay. And then moving on to the tree. You know, we have a really magnificent tree. And I don't know if there's been analysis conducted of the, in addition to all the environmental good stuff, the trees do, we know that. But there is a measurable financial benefit to having a tree. There's a website where you look at the species, the size, and it tells you how much your house value increases. Of course, that is a concomitant increase in city revenue from property taxes as well. I don't know if that's been analyzed, but I called an arborist and I started talking to him about this tree and what could be done to protect it from the turnaround in terms of the soil. And I started talking about structures. And he said, Jeff, you're starting to sound like an ultra crepitarian. And an ultra crepitarian is one who talks about something that he doesn't really know what he's talking about, but he wants to sound like he does. So I said, okay, I really can't talk about detailed structures to protect the tree. However, I was wondering if there's really been any extensive analysis of what can be done from an engineering standpoint to protect the tree. In discussion, I'll talk a little more about the vagueness of the protection language that the applicant has mentioned. But, and I know you haven't heard back from the fire department yet, because I did ask some pointed questions about, you know, why does a fire engine need to turn around when it can back up? And I used to drive fire engines, so I know that you can back a fire engine up. So anyway, that's something we, I think, is an important question. Because if this turnaround isn't necessary, perhaps there's a greater chance of saving the tree without spending a lot of engineering money on saving the roots, okay? So the other question I had is about visual screening to the south of the parcel and to the east. That is, the protection of Blackberry Farms picnic area, screen so it can't see the houses. On the reverse side, the owner of house on lot number four is going to basically look out on a wall of leaves. They won't be able to see anything, and especially as those trees grow. And is there any protection that the staff has recommended in terms of ensuring that those trees will not be thinned, pruned, or removed?
You're referring to the trees, parcel four, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's also, well, depending on the tree species, the city does have a protected tree ordinance, and there's a limitation as to how much a tree can be trimmed. Essentially, something around twenty-five percent. And if it goes past that, essentially, you've gone too far. And so you have to come back, you have to provide removals and replacements accordingly. So that's usually what happens. Sometimes the tree will keep chopping away and, you know, it's not keeping the tree alive.
Yeah.
So they would have to apply for removal permit.
Well, you can prune twenty-five percent a year without hurting the tree. So we'll talk more about that during the discussion. I just didn't know if that was something that came up during the staff's discussion with the developer.
No, and again, it might be a good question for the developer, but these are shown for illustrative purposes. These can be modified with the homes later on.
Because as former Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, there's one house that really intrudes on the visual aspect of Blackberry Farm. It's not part of this discussion. Another question I had is about a stormwater management plan. Is there a sort of a trigger lot size where a stormwater management plan is triggered?
So they do have drainage facilities on site. The way I've understood it, I'm not engineer. I did have a discussion with our city engineer. It's once it goes over ten thousand square feet that stormwater drainage, stormwater facilities will be required. I asked him what that would entail. It's like typically bigger catchment basins. We do have, the applicant's engineer probably speak more to that, but yeah, it's a threshold of impervious area.
Because at the risk of sounding like an ultra crepitarian, I really, I had college courses, I've got a degree in natural resources, and I really am concerned about stormwater, especially in the foothills where stormwater gains momentum, speed. And so, yes, it's okay from a standpoint of a developer to just get the water off the site. However, you add it to the creek down below, and that's a concern.
Right. The stormwater, and again, their engineer can discuss that better, but it's designed to actually keep more of the water on site, not push it off. So it'll be essentially forcing it into our watershed.
Has there been a discussion of having no net runoff from this site?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's all my questions. Thanks. I guess we have a presentation by the applicant? Do we have a presentation?
Yes, the applicant and their team is here.
Okay. Come up and introduce yourselves.
Hello. Good evening, Commissioners. I'd just like to introduce myself. My name is Lei Yuan. I'm an architect. And I also volunteer for the City of Los Altos Environmental Commission as a commissioner. But I'm speaking solely for, on behalf of myself and my clients. I don't necessarily have a presentation. If there's a question, need me to get into some details, I can open some of my drawings or some of the image that I took from the site to share a more.
Excuse me. Can everyone hear okay? You might want to go a little closer to the microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would this be better? Okay. Yeah, hi, everyone. I probably have met most of you through a few neighborhood outreach meetings. Anyway, so I will try to get the computer get to wake up. But meantime, I guess I just want to thank our community, the neighbors. And I had a very good time talking to them and sincerely understand that the neighbors are very concerned, bring up a lot of good questions and their, I guess, solutions even sometimes to our projects. And so they spend a lot of time and I appreciate that. So I just, I guess, I'm an architect. I don't, I'm not an expert on subdivision matters, but I am acting as a manager for this project on behalf of our client. So we do have our engineering team. We have our soil engineer, very experienced soil engineer firm, our roommate engineer, and their engineering Jonathan Fang is here, present. And also we have our civil engineer Giuliani and co. engineers. So Mark Hilton is a very experienced civil engineer. And also, we also work with land surveyor Dong Marot. So he has signed for our subdivision map. As well as city arborist Michael Bench. And our team, also our clients also hire our own arborists to try to help us analyze there's tree issues on site. So I guess mainly, mainly, I guess my computer is not really coming up so quickly. I will try to get it on if there's a question and I will accordingly to show some image if that communicates a little bit better. But in general, I think I want to maybe just answer a few questions from Commissioners. I guess Commissioner Jeff Paulson really has a question or concerns about tree thirty-nine. We do have email communications with the Fire Marshal, the head of Fire Marshal Doug Harding. And he had communication stating that it's very possible that we can work with their engineering to save the tree. And as he retired after time, and we do have the new head of Fire Marshal onboard, Ms. Tracy has communicated with our civil engineer as well. So we are very hopeful. This is a very good, I think, good solution after meeting with the neighbors. And it's a very significant, meaningful tree for the neighbors. So for that, that's some details on that. And on previous, I guess, service, our engineer probably will answer question much better. But in general, I understand that our development is such that it creates, it helps to improve the natural drainage. Otherwise, we'll drain down to the slope. But through our lot five, the common partial, most of our site drainage now are draining directly to scenic Boulevard. So I guess in, I will leave that to our engineer to explain. But in general, it's a better after the design for this development. Okay, so I guess I will briefly introduce myself as far. And any question for me?
Questions? Okay. Well, you mentioned trees. I guess you're the best person to ask about the trees. Is that right?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm not an arborist, but we have a very, we do have the city arborist, Michael Bench. He surveys the trees on site. And we also have our tree arborist, Richard Smith. So he also came lately on the site and tried to answer some of the neighbors' concerns. Some of the trees on our south side of the lot, very close to one of the neighbor to the south. And so tried to examine the health of the trees and then give us some recommendations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not an arborist, but I do manage a hundred-acre forest. And I've been pruning trees professionally and personally for forty years. And I looked at some of the work that had been done on the trees, and some of these are very mature California live oaks. And the trees were, to put it nicely, butchered. And I don't know, do you know who actually did the butchering of those trees?
You mean the?
I guess you would call it pruning. But who did the tree work initially on the site?
On the site, I guess our client tried to prune the trees. But we don't, I don't think, I don't think after we got some notice from the city that we, I don't think there's further pruning on the site. Although one tree, as I understand, near lot one is quite ill from some kind of bug. And it recommended to us that we need to remove that pine tree for safety reasons, but we are hold off on that.
Okay. So the tree work, you don't know, it was done after you purchased the property, is that right?
I actually am not sure the time of the purchase. I think the purchase of the land takes some time to finalize, and maybe that's between the buyer and seller. And the time may be fall in between.
Okay. Well, the trees, I think, will survive, but they'll be misshapen and take a lot of expert work to mitigate. In the staff report, you said you'll make every effort to preserve the tree. Would you be willing to put up a hundred thousand dollar bond to protect the tree?
I would have to ask the client, or we would definitely take that.
Is the client here?
The client is here, Mr. Tracy.
All right.
Should I? Yeah, he's present. Oh, yeah. Okay. Here.
You have to翻译一下.
I can translate, I guess. He's the owner, Kai Xingxi. Oh, yeah. He's saying that he's here, very care about the projects and will pay respect to the commission.
Well, here's how a bond would work. You would put up a hundred thousand dollars and you'd get the bond back after, say, ten years if the tree's still in good shape. So you get your money back. If the tree dies, we keep the money. Do you understand?
Maybe I can try to translate, but I don't know if I understand fully the bond.
Well, okay. What it means is often in projects, applicant or a contractor will put up a bond. That is, they will put money in a bank account, not the city's account, not their account, to make sure that they are financially responsible for the work being done as they said it would be done, okay? And often that has to do with engineering things. But in this case, we're talking about you're making every effort to save the tree. And I'm just wondering if, as in parlance, it'd say, are you willing to put your money where your mouth is with regard to this?
I see. So you mentioned a number, a hundred thousand?
Well, that's a number I just pulled out of the air. But I want it to be a high enough number so that there'd be a motivation to actually save the tree.
Okay, I would definitely translate.
Okay, sure.
Get back, get the answer as soon as possible, or I guess the answer to get back to you.
And who are waiting for the translation? Council, that is something that the cities do at times to ensure various things are done with construction projects.
Can you, Chair, can you clarify, you're talking about tree number thirty-nine?
Yes, tree number thirty-nine.
Yeah, I think Mr. Seid said it is very likely possible, can consider this suggestion. Can consider this suggestion.
You know, what, what I've been told is we don't need to decide this right away. The, the commission can recommend this as a condition of approval.
I see, yeah.
And then you can work with the staff. And again, we have no power, we only recommend. The city council is the one who does the final decision. That's how the process works.
Right, right, no, that's a very...
But I think there, there's enough concern I heard from the residents about the tree. It would be to the applicants both fiscal advantage as well as advantage with regard to reputation in the community to save that tree.
Yeah, thank you. We're really glad that we have a lot of intellectuals here to give many good recommendations. Okay, so, thank you.
One other question I have is about the visual screen from the park. This is, number four is a home that's going to be built right near a public picnic area. That is really kind of an open space, natural area. So when people have a picnic, they look around and they see trees. Now, what kind of guarantee can we work out to make sure that those trees aren't thinned so that when people look up, they see a house? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. I think first of all, we are, we are, we are waiting to, I guess we are not having any details on house number four. Because Lot 4 has a bigger slope average, so it reached to a point that any design would have to go through Hillview Commission. So we will make sure that from below, we probably will set up pole, story pole lines to see if the heights, we'll have to test that. We will take your concern into consideration.
Well, trees grow, and therein lies the rub, the catch, the problem, is that this visual screen will grow, and it will block the view of the owner of number four. We're talking 10, 20, 50 years from now, long after you're gone, long after we're gone. But, but I want to make sure that the park's view is protected. And perhaps we could get some staff thoughts on how cities protect views long term.
We'll have to get back to you on that one.
Okay, all right, okay. I think, what I'm feeling is that there's more analysis that may need to be done with this project, okay?
Sure, yeah.
All right. And, and the last one is about stormwater. And you said the stormwater would be directed onto scenic Boulevard. Maybe one of the engineers would be better to answer the question about stormwater.
Yes, maybe it's time that maybe I introduce our engineer, Mark Hilton.
Hello, I'm Mark Hilton with Giuliani and Co. And the way the storm system is set up to be implemented for this project, the only impervious surfaces that we're going to have on this project are the roofs. Everything else, the driveways, the walkways, the public, or excuse me, the private street, all of that would be done with pervious pavers, which directs all the water to go into the ground. Okay, so the ground will get soaked. We do have a subdrain system there, which will pick up any excess water so that, you know, the ground doesn't fail. And that water will go out to the scenic Boulevard. Before it gets there, though, any and all drainage will go through a, kind of a retention pond that actually is rock lined, again, trying to get water into the ground. Each one of the houses has its own rock lined retention pond, except lots 3 and 4 will share a very large one. You, you see all that on the, on the plan. This was worked out, you know, very extensively with Chad Mosley, the city engineer. He told me exactly what he wanted, and we did exactly what he, what he said. And he's, he's very happy with what we did. And so we're actually picking up all the water that used to flow onto this site, used to flow, what, what didn't soak into the ground would flow down the hill and then go over that basically cliff, okay? So what we're doing now is we're picking up all of that water, trying to get as much of it into the ground as we can. Whatever doesn't soak into the ground and gets into the subdrain system will be directed out toward scenic Boulevard, okay? So all of that land below the cul-de-sac, the only water that's going to go over that cliff area is the rainwater that falls on it. Nothing else is being directed there.
Okay, well, you know, these are the kinds of things that wouldn't be done 30, 20 years ago, I don't think, so...
Not at all.
If Chad's happy, I'm happy with that, okay? Thank you, thank you for that discussion. It helps to, to know what you've done in that regard, thanks.
Sure, no problem. Any other questions from any other? No?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I do have a question to the architect for the applicant. I know since the, the project bring up to the public, there's a continuous outreach to the, your neighbors. As you serve for your client, your personal has been transit, some design transform from beginning to the current version. Could you describe what's the major change based on your outreach to your neighbor, what has been done so far?
Okay, and I guess since this one works, we can use this to to point a little bit easier. So after the outreach, I think there are few concerns. I guess one major concern is the subdivision of 3 lot into 4. And of course, everyone is concerned, and you'll hear probably their concerns. My answer to that is that we are engineers. We don't make that decision. It's our client's direction. And we are trying to work with city, with the zoning, with the law for compliance. So, but number two concerns is that very good concern about the scenic Boulevard street safety. It's a hill, it's a little hill street that you can see there are few lines across the road, being narrow, being curly, and being lack of parking space. But our project, first of all, you, is evening out, even out the various width of the street. So currently, I believe the street is about 20 feet wide, or 22 at places. And we engineer to be 24 feet wide, constant. And that street has been engineered from this point, the east point downwards, for other earlier developments. So the street width was constant from this point, east, northwards. And then from here to the end of scenic, to Carmel Road, is a little bit uneven. So our project calls for improvement for this public street. In addition, the, it's planning or public works requirement to have on-street parking requirements. So we do propose for parallel parking on scenic Boulevard. So I believe that resolve, that will help the concerns for neighbors that lacking of parking space on the street. Although I also heard that it will be too crowded. It's already dangerous street. But I think it's, every, every decision, every improvement has both side to it perhaps. But I don't need to answer that too long. But anyway, so I'm trying to say the improvement afterwards is, okay, so it relates to this because the street safety is a great concern. Although from our side, our side of street coming out to scenic, it's a little bit safer than the opposite side. Because when you back out to scenic from the north side of the lots or the properties, you have a cute number, angle to see your left or right to, to know if, to save to come out because it's harder to see the, the cars coming from northeast, coming this way. But in our south side of the road, actually, when you back out, you have a wider angle. You can see the down, the street coming up, cars or cars coming down with a little bit ease, I guess, wheel angle. However, we do, we did take the considerations. And Mark, you want to add?
Yeah. One of the things that the neighbors brought up is that they didn't like the possibility of cars backing up into the, the street. Even though it's a rural street, you know, we, we thought they had a valid point. After the meeting that we had at the environmental meeting, I met with Tim Borden. And Tim suggested that we add small turnarounds for lots 1 and 2, which we have done. So now those lots will no longer back out. They will go out nose first, which is much safer. And of course, lots 3 and 4 will proceed out on that common drive, which is very wide, very flat. And when they turn, they'll have a great view, good sight distance up and down the street. And so in, in, in terms of traffic visibility, the, the driving on this will be very much improved for our lots because they'll all be going nose first.
Yeah, so I think, so the, the street safety, I think, is one or few important concerns from the neighbor. And we definitely improved after the outreach. And these two lot situation are much improved right now. So I think that's a success, and we are glad we have gone through this process. So those are one and two improvement. And number three will, is the big tree that we are trying to save. And before, if no one really emphasized on the saving of the trees, we actually proposed number 39 as a removal, number, the, the trees is being removed. So that's, I think it's a good effort that we all will even put up a bond to save that tree. And there are two other, not as major, but pretty major concern for one neighbor to the east is that we, we improved, we revised our plan to have structural rail along this property line here to ensure that the safety of traffic going down to their property because there's a already existing seven-foot retaining wall from their property at the property line right now. So their lot is lower. And so this way will be pretty safe and so good for, I guess, for everyone's worry about the condition. And number five, after the outreach, will, will be the landscaping that we revised and put a note in conditions that we will put to the retaining walls at the cul-de-sac as well as the walls that are here.
Commissioners, do you, you have any questions for Mark, since he's at the mic? Okay. Mark, I do have one question. When you talked with Tim Borden, did you, did you discuss any possible traffic calming devices on scenic Boulevard to slow the traffic? I'm not talking about stop signs or speed bumps, but, you know, chokers, speed humps, that kind of thing?
No, no, to, to be honest, Tim was very adamant the fact that this road is underutilized.
Was, I'm sorry?
It was underutilized.
Underutilized, okay, all right.
But, you know, that's Tim, you know, I, I'm not a traffic engineer.
Yeah, yeah, I know, too, okay.
But, yeah, anything else?
Okay, no? Well, let's move on to public comment period. I have a stack of cards, I'll go through them. And again, you, you have three minutes. You'll hear a tone when 15 seconds from the time your time is up. So I have Joe Cleaver, followed by Norm Donovan.
Thank you, members of the commission. My name is Joseph Cleaver, and I would like to be able to defer my time to John Gushkai, who can probably explain our situation more eloquently than I can. Thank you.
Thanks for saving us a little time, Joe, okay. Norm Donovan, followed by Greg McNeil.
Hi, I'm Norm Donovan. I live on scenic Boulevard, a little bit below this current development. Most of the issues, one driveway, two driveways, I don't really care about. What I care about is parking. Recently, the city decided to stop, to make, our lots were all approved 30. For 30 years, we've had parking on the street. And so the city suddenly decided, oh, no parking on the street. So any effort here to restrict parking is a serious concern. It's been a real pain in the butt. Every time a delivery truck comes, they block our driveway. We, we parks, cars parking in, be in front of other cars. We can't back out, it's just a mess. But secondly, the second concern we've seen is that since the parking has been removed, the average speed on the street's gone way up. People have their own private little auto bond. They don't like having parked cars on it, so they speed along there. A couple of weeks ago, I saw something I've never seen in 20 years of living there. I saw two cars going down the hill, one of them passing the other one. I, I think we've really hit the highway there. And we've got two little one-year-olds living on our driveway. So we need more parking. And personally, I guess I'm here to speak in favor of dangerous streets because when you have parked cars, people slow down, they pay attention, they look around. There's lots of places there's parked cars. If I ever driven in San Francisco, when I go over around Montevista to drop my kids off, there's a lot of parked cars, but it means you slow down and pay attention. The absence of the parking on the street has led to a situation. So I just want to make sure in this new development, we're not ending up with creating this zone where people can drive down at whatever speed they want without paying attention because somebody's going to get hurt. Their speeds are just out of control. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have Greg McNeil, followed by John Gashaki.
Hello, my name's Greg. I live on scenic Boulevard. And for those of you that aren't familiar with scenic Boulevard, which is what we're talking about, it is a very steep, narrow road, and it has a blind corner, and it has a blind crest. I live at the very bottom, which is closest to Stevens Creek Boulevard. And the first thing I wanted to bring up was, we have a few issues. One is a density issue. One is a driveway, number of inroads into scenic Boulevard already. And then my biggest concern, because I know others will talk about some of those things in more detail, is safety. My son and I are both cyclists. We ride up scenic Boulevard to exit that neighborhood pretty much every day. He rides more than I do. He's crashed once at the top, just because the road's in kind of bad condition. The comment about it being underutilized, I live at the bottom. My house is the last house on the corner. So what I think people forget is that there's an access road that maybe was connected at one time to scenic Boulevard. I mean, to, sorry, scenic Boulevard connected to Stevens Creek Boulevard. It's actually blocked off, so it's just for fire access. But we also have the Blackberry Farm trail that starts right there. So informal poll, sitting in my front yard, counting the number of people and casually talking to them. 27 people walked by in a one-hour period, half of which lived beyond the top of scenic Boulevard. So that's a dozen people that are walking. This is just an evening, pick an evening, that are walking to get to the trail. So I don't believe it's underutilized. I'm familiar with the cycling community as well. A number of cyclists will, will cut through that access to get onto scenic Boulevard, climb to the top, and then get over towards McClellan, towards Stevens Creek Reservoir, as opposed to doing foothill in Stevens Creek, just to get off that area. I think the other part that's important to remember, too, is children that live in the neighborhood that are walking to Stevens Creek Elementary School, which is across Stevens Creek Boulevard. All my sons went to Kennedy in Montevista. And there's a number of kids that will live even higher up scenic Boulevard, even onto Carmen, that will actually come down scenic Boulevard, ride to the path, and then cut through Blackberry Farm, and then ride up to whatever the road is that takes you to Montevista, and then not use McClellan. So there's a lot of activity that actually goes down scenic Boulevard. And my concern about safety and access, there's three access roads that are now dumping more traffic onto that more dangerous part of scenic Boulevard. As you get further to the bottom, it, it widens up, you know, parking on both sides. There's plenty of visibility. But up around that corner, it's incredibly dangerous. As you're leaving in the evenings, as you crest the corner, it's a blind corner in the hill.
Okay, 15 seconds?
Okay. If the sun's in the right spot, you're completely blinded. And right now, as was pointed out, it's 20 feet, it's going to go to 24. My concern is, is safety, and it needs to be looked at more carefully than I think it has been. Thanks so much.
Okay, now we have John Gashaki, followed by Tom Tranquil.
Thank you, just give me a one minute.
Just give me a one minute to plug this in. Can I even move this?
I'm not counting your time while you're plugging in, okay?
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate it.
Because sometimes these things do take time, I know.
Okay.
Okay, again, you have three minutes.
Okay, so I'm speaking on behalf of Christie McGee also, and then Rob Fisher joined the meeting after I filled out my card, and he's decided to yield his time to me soon, so I hopefully have nine minutes. Is that true?
Staff? No.
Oh, and, and Jeff, and Jeff Cleaver. But I don't, I don't need nine or twelve minutes. I basically have, I need about seven minutes.
Sure, you've got the seven.
Okay, great. Okay, well, I got suckered, I mean...
You may hear a tone, but I'll reset it, okay?
I somehow got suckered or volunteered into speaking about this for multiple people. So Kelly Walsh and I, my wife, we are at 10230, which is directly next door on the downhill side of this property. Christie is at 10250, directly on the other side. So we are the closest neighbors, the most affected, and we have a few concerns that we want to raise. The primary one is density, and the neighborhood has allowed me to, to focus on this topic. We have other topics, but for the sake of not keeping you here too late, we divvied this up. Safety is a big concern for us as well. Mitigating construction impact, the core, the poor communication we've had with the developer. I have a very different opinion about the community outreach than the developer conveyed. Actually, to, to pause on that, Jeff, to answer your question clearly, which you didn't get an answer to, those trees were pruned well after the property was sold to this developer, and it was during the process when they were cleaning up the, the property. So, to answer your question. Preserving the neighborhood atmosphere is another priority. Okay, so this is a map of parcels on that side of scenic, starting with our house, all the way to the other end. So every private residence that's not part of an association on that side of scenic, the property in question is, is in blue, and I'm going to highlight in color all the other properties on this side of the street that are seventy-five hundred square foot lots. There basically is none. So density is a big thing for us. The property is currently three parcels. It has been three parcels since the first map that we found since nineteen seventeen. Every one of us in the neighborhood purchased our homes with the understanding that this single property will eventually be three, not more. We think three can still fit the neighborhood. The current proposal, the best word I've heard, Terry Brown's word, I've got to give him credit, it's a shoehorned design. It's, it's intended to cram as much as possible into this property. At seven point five, it would be basically an island on that side of the, the street. Every other property is ten K and above. We've had numerous requests to the developer. Have you considered a three-home plan? And summarily dismissed every time. They basically have shown no previous work or interest in considering a three-home plan. We believe not only it can fit the neighborhood, but it can actually be economically viable. We don't believe it's our responsibility to come up with a plan for them, either in a drawing or the financials. But I think it's worth noting that with a little bit of time spent, it can address a lot of the concerns, including the tree, including safety, including a lot of things. So I, I was hesitant to spend a lot of time on a proposal because I don't want to do their job for them, but it is important to show just an idea. So this is the current plan with three egress points on the scenic. This is just one idea, which has three parcels, which affords a lot of luxuries of privacy, backing homes away from Christie's Corner, which is that wraparound design, which is a terrible privacy invasion. It includes one driveway with one access off to scenic. Everything else comes off the, the access road. It also avoids the big turnaround, which can save the tree as well, and it won't be the eyesore for us. So a lot of things can be done with this. I'll, I'll show you a couple of examples. So one quick word on economics, I don't want to go into the details here, but just some quick source of, of data. So there are many large homes on scenic, currently in the three point five to four point five million range. Those homes are averaging between one thousand to eleven hundred per square foot value. So taking the median between those two things, that one fifty-three, thirty-three hundred square foot homes has the same value as for twenty-five hundred square foot homes, not to mention the lower construction costs. So the economics, we believe, can work if they were considered, but we haven't been able to get anyone to consider that. Okay, so that's the current lot design. Like I said, three parcels. The driveways for those back lots on this plan, thirteen A, fourteen A, are adjacent to our property. We prefer to keep it that way. That was a big assumption when we purchased our home. One of the small accommodations that the, the developer has made is the guardrail that was mentioned for security purposes because literally our house is up against the hill and a house, a car could fall onto the property, literally. Okay, so two vantage points. So if you were on that red spot in the corner of our deck, looking through our backyard, this is the view today and those red lines represent where the retaining wall would go. And our fear is that this is going to be our new view instead of the, the beautiful natural view we have today. If you're standing on Christie's Corner, looking at that wraparound current design proposal, this is a picture at twelve-foot height. Now imagine a two-story home and wrapped around both sides of that corner. It's an incredible invasion for privacy, right onto a pole and backyard. The construction effects that we want to see, some plan about mitigating factors, that dwelling that's been there, it's been there for a long time, we're concerned about asbestos, but also noise and dust. Two last points. One is, we want, we don't want to lose everything that keeps scenic scenic. This is literally just shot from our house or Mary's property, I should say, the subject property. It's been lovingly known as Mary's property for all those years that Mary lived there. And then to close, we feel like this is our neighborhood. When this developer leaves, we're going to be living with the ramifications of the decisions that we all make here. And as long as everyone's legal rights are observed, we feel like the opinions of the neighbors, Cupertino residents, taxpayers, and city officials, as yourselves, should carry more weight than a developer who's shown time and time again through this process that profits have been more important than community outreach. Answering questions, the meetings that have been set up, the lack of acknowledgement to even speak about any other plan besides the one they proposed. You know, I can go into details, I was concerned about my time, trying to keep it at six minutes.
You've got time. You've got another four minutes.
So the community outreach, I, I think is an important topic.
Oh, sorry, another three minutes then.
Okay. I'll keep, I'll keep it brief. My characterization of the meetings would be very, very different than what you heard earlier. Some of those meetings were set up with no notice, so some members that did not get notice at all. Some got noticed the night before or that morning. Most meetings, I'd say actually all meetings, either the owner is not there, or the owner is there and Lay is the representative speaking, but most times, what we hear is, well, I'm just the architect, or I'm just the X Y Z, I don't have, you know, I can't address that. And you can't have it both ways. You can't say, I have, I'm sending a representative to speak for me, but also have the representative defer on discussion. So it, it has left a lot to be desired in terms of communication with the developer.
Thank you, Tom.
I have a clarification question for the speaker. Would that be okay?
Sure.
So you mentioned that you'd like to have the, that common driveway next to ten-two-thirty scenic, your property. Can you speak a little bit as to why?
Yeah, it's basically privacy. We are on the downhill side, and so a property directly next to us is even worse than a flat house right next to you. So it would be a lot more privacy intrusive because we're on the downhill side.
So it's more of a privacy concern as opposed to, say, safety?
Yeah, the safety concern was always a car, for example, if it was a road, which got addressed.
Okay.
But it's, it's privacy. We, we fell in love with that property. Terry Brown, right here, owned the property before us, and we fell in love with it because of the privacy. And that would be hugely impacted if there was a house looking right in. We've got windows and a deck, everything is just impacted if there was a house right there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, now we have Tom Tranquil, followed by Nadine Carlton.
Hi, I'm, I'm Tom Tranquil. I live at Adalhide Court, which is very close to this development. I want to talk about water drainage concerns, so I've got a, I have some charts that I'd like to show, paper charts. Oh, thank you, okay. So my wife Janet and I live here on Adalhide Court. This is Scenic Boulevard. Starting my stopwatch, okay. And this is the project right here. Now, I've got three charts here where I'm going to show why I'm concerned about water drainage, and then one chart that's going to show why tie this into the current development. All right, so the water drains from this area down Scenic Boulevard, and in fact, there is a gutter on the southeast side of Scenic Boulevard. And I believe the theory is that it's going to flow down this gutter, down here to a, a storm drain that's located right here. Okay, I think that's the, what the concept is, and I'll talk about what the actual practice This is a photo of, taken of that intersection, the intersection of Scenic Boulevard and, and Adalhide Court. So the photographer is standing right here and looking this way. Okay. And this is a photo taken about two weeks ago when someone upstream was watering the yard, and we see this about maybe three or four times a week in, in dry weather. The, the practice, what actually happens is the water does not go down the gutter. It makes a sharp right turn onto Adalhide Court. That, that's what really happens. Okay. Now, let's look at Adalhide Court. This is a photo taken of, on Adalhide Court. The water runs along a gutter on the side of Adalhide Court, then it makes a sharp left and goes into this storm drain. All right? And this is my house. My house is right over here. The Ranjons live right, right over here. So what I'm pointing at, or what, what we're looking at, is the water making a, a run down scenic, it makes a sharp turn onto Adalhide, then a left turn into right, right between those, those two houses, that strain, storm drain. And I imagine, I, I don't know, but I imagine that this storm drain is designed to handle runoff from Adalhide Court only. Okay, so relevant to this project...
Okay, fifteen seconds?
Right. I'm concerned about actual additional runoff. And also, there's a couple of the, Mark, the, the engineer said, don't worry about it, we have abatement procedures. Also, he said, part of his plan is to fix that gutter. He says he's going to, he's going to take care of that problem where the water makes the right turn. And so my, my concern is, you know, can I count on this? And that hundred thousand dollar bond sounds pretty attractive to me. So maybe, you know, hundred thousand in and then five thousand in and back.
Sorry, your time is up, thank you. Okay, now we have Nadine Carlton, followed by Alex Carlton and Frank Chen. Are they together for the three minutes or?
No, no.
She's working one speech, I have a second one with Frank.
Okay, so you're combining your times then?
I'm combining my time with Frank, I'm trying to get her plugged in.
I, I have, I would like to combine my time with Janet Tranquil and Minu Devrani, although I don't need nine minutes either, I should only need about five. I'm kind of in the same position as John G., as being kind of drafted to present for a group, if that's acceptable, for five minutes.
You know, I'm a little confused, although we do allow spokespeople to speak for the group, and that, that is helpful, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
So you're asking for, just to clarify, how many minutes are you asking for now?
Six.
Six, okay. All right.
Oh. Sorry, Microsoft is complaining, it wants to do an update right now.
I won't start the timer till you get your Microsoft going here.
The cloud is wonderful until they try to do something to you at the worst possible time, sorry. So I'm Nadine Carlton and I live at 10062 Scenic Boulevard. My husband and I are homeowners in the Meadows of Cupertino Homeowners Association. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. Like John, I've sort of been volunteered to speak on behalf of other homeowners in our area. As you will notice, there are over thirty-five homeowners, pretty much everyone on this side of the room is a neighbor of ours who, actually, I think I know just about everybody by name, who has concerns about this project. Twenty-four homeowners, in fact, out of about forty in our neighborhood submitted a petition to Cupertino Planning in October of twenty seventeen, that this redevelopment plan is not consistent with our neighborhood for housing density, road and parking safety, and the environmental impacts on the steep land and the slope of our road. We have tried to work with the developer and dozens of neighbors to address these issues. Unfortunately, we feel few of our major issues have been addressed by the developer. And our top concerns are the density, the parking on a narrow flood evacuation route road, and the road and hillside subdivision safety. The developer has really not addressed many of the negatives to our neighborhood of their design. I certainly, we all appreciate John G.'s evaluation of the economics of three homes versus four homes, but we haven't even been given data of that sort on the comparison between four lower-valued properties, which require massive civil engineering work versus the three higher-valued properties from the developer. They, we've requested this information last November fifth and have received nothing. This design has Christie McGee's home wrapped with houses along her entire back property at only minimum setbacks, with no privacy due to this design. And we also feel, although at tonight's meeting, this, I'm somewhat adjusting this, we thought also the developer might be able to sell some of the land to Cupertino, but after what Mr. Paulson said earlier, that would probably need to be investigated, but we would encourage that to be investigated, which apparently it has also not been done for a tax deduction, which could also offset some of the costs of a three-house plan instead of a four-house plan. We also wanted to mention, however, that some homeowners really feel that anyone who purchased a home on parcel three or parcel four would despise having their driveway in, in the location of the steepest part of the Scenic Boulevard hill. That access road needing to be moved is an opinion that many of us down the hill share with Ruth Chen and John Chang, who are here as well in the audience, who live directly opposite the ten-two-three-four Scenic Boulevard property. Basically, what this property looks like if you're coming down the hill is this, and where that truck is located coming down the hill is where they want to put the access road. And by only widening this road by effectively two feet, because the other eight to ten feet goes to parking, you're creating a lot of extra blind spots and making the road more dangerous, as Greg McNeil already explained, for everyone from drivers to pedestrians and cyclists. Other reasons, of course, for a better design and for three houses is we are in the flood evacuation zone for the Stevens Creek Dam, and our only exit is this road, because any attempt to go out the fire road at the bottom near Greg's house would actually put you at higher danger of drowning in a flood. So this is... So this is another thing where, why we feel one driveway would be a much safer alternative. Um, by the way, uh, statements in the developer's current plans that there are two driveways in use on this property today are simply not the reality. Um, there is no use of the second track. It isn't even really a developed track, okay? Um, many of us, uh, as John already spoke to one three-house development plan, this is a three-house development plan which Ron Jones submitted last October. Um, the access road is in a much more visible place, higher on the property, so many homeowners prefer this approach, especially those of us down the hill. Um, and we would like to see this considered, although we all agree with John G., that really the developer should be proposing some of these alternatives. We would also really like to see one driveway only, very strongly. The four houses on Adelhide Court, which is directly below this property, all use one access road to reach those four houses, and these houses should do the same thing. Um, if, um, however, uh, with the four houses, we would also like to see that parcel four is legally rezoned to never allow any future subdivision, particularly based on Mr. Takahashi's comments, that a secondary dwelling would be built. We would really not appreciate the density, uh, going even higher up to five houses. Um, finally, I'm also very disappointed with how the developer ran the meetings with the neighborhood. Um, to be perfectly honest, we felt they were designed not to...
Fifteen seconds.
Okay, not to address any of our major issues, but to check off a box on the city planning application. Um, and other people will speak more to all of that, and as, and the fact that the designs currently are strictly to meet minimums.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Clarification question?
Yeah.
Alright, um, I just wanna make sure, Nadine, that you're speaking against the on-street parking for safety reasons? Or did I misunderstand you?
Um, we do not want on-street parking, uh, as part of the thirty-two feet. If they wanna add more parking out along Scenic Boulevard, it should be on the property, and there is space for that to be added to the property, because we do understand Norm Domvanvin's concern, as well as Ruth Chen and John Chang's concern, that they, and John G.'s, that they need some visitor parking in the neighborhood. But we really feel that only, uh, having the driving lanes be twenty-four feet wide is not, not reasonable considering how blind and steep the road is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other que, no?
Okay, now we have a duo, Alex Carlton and Frank Chen, uh, followed by Mackenzie Mossing.
Sorry.
Um, yeah, Frank Chen has given me a lot of the feedback, which has led into what I've written, so he's graciously allowed me to, um, be able to combine our thoughts into one. Allow me to, um, drive my own presentation.
By the way, I do appreciate the spokesperson approach. It, it helps keep the meeting focused and, and moving along, so thank you for that.
When it works. Good evening. I'm Alex Carlton. I live at 10062 Scenic Boulevard, Meadows Association, just downhill from this project. I've been in Cupertino since eighty-seven and expect to spend my retirement in the same community. Thanks to Frank's Chen, we've come up with some thoughts for this. The specific issue that brings me before you tonight is the impact that the existing proposal has on the traffic flows up and down the hillside. The attempt to squeeze four houses into this specific property leads to problematic trade-offs, which in turn increases the difficulty of navigating the only road in and out of our neighborhood, which in turn is creating unhappy neighbors. However, the more important point is the larger problem with the project. A heavy reliance on technical compliance with the letter of the law, rather than any apparent attempt to honor the intent of those requirements. To pick on an example, in the staff report, um, top of page eight describes community outreach on November fifth. Uh, reads fine. Achievement, you know, achievement accomplished. Um, well, the top of page nine notes that a few days later, the applicant requested a postponement. The reality is that two meetings on November fifth were so spectacularly unsuccessful. Questions went unanswered, alternatives rebuffed, eighteen neighbors were concerned, zero in support. The chosen course of action was to request this indefinite postponement. January twenty-eighth, another attempt. This is where the only notice, um, was sent out at nine fifty-seven PM on a Saturday night for a Sunday morning meeting. At this session, once again, nothing was provided in writing, few of our questions were answered. Most of the questions were replied with some polite form of "I don't know." February tenth, last session, with updated plans to address our concerns. Except at the last minute, we're told the one person on the developer's team who spoke English at the previous meetings was already on the East Coast. The two totally new representatives filled in, showed us the minor revisions, but admitted they were un, not sufficiently briefed to be able to answer our questions. Was this actually community outreach? As an active participant in almost all of these meetings, the feeling I got repeatedly was that the developer was only going through the motions. And many aspects of this project appear to be just as similarly focused on the bare minimum requirements. Lots are defined within one-tenth of one percent of the minimum square footage. Walls are pushed directly on top of the minimum setback lines. Are our zoning ordinances building specifications, or are they guidelines for better communities? These plans might be legal, but they seem out of character with the majority of this neighborhood. To offer a couple examples where concessions might help at least improve the, at least improve the perceptions, the project lists nine thousand nine hundred square feet of impervious area. As noted in the EIR in tonight's, uh, materials, if the project reaches ten thousand square feet, then the requirements for a storm water management plan are triggered. Arbitrarity limiting at ninety-nine percent of the trigger point looks a lot like an attempt to avoid a reasonable requirement. The architect reported that rapid water shedding precluded consideration of one of the driveway alternatives popular with neighbors. Apparently runoff is a worry. Why not commit to a complete storm water management plan? To circle back to traffic flow, the staff report notes the street will be widened. Yet, on the tentative map, the curb placement still looks alarmingly tight, at least the top of the, of the first parking spaces. I'm not here to argue over a couple of feet. My question is, why place the new curb in the public right-of-way at all? Why not place the curb along the edge of the project property? Set back the parking to be behind the neighbor's curb line? Enable the traffic lanes each to be thirteen or even fourteen feet wide at this point? Is there a reason why at this spot the street cannot be wider than the legal minimum? The plans here, the ones in the EIR, show that the developers have been working on this project for three years, long before the property even changed hands. The neighbors first learned most of what we know during the environmental review, where we were told our concerns did not fit within the confines of an EIR. But if necessary, we were told to work with the developer, and if necessary, we could bring our concerns to the planning commission. In my few minutes here with you, I've tried to describe our attempts to work with the developer and the so-called community outreach. If there was success with that process, we would not be here tonight. Instead, we come before you, hoping still in some way, some degree of satisfaction is possible. Please, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlton. Next, we have, uh, Mackenzie Mossing, followed by Vishu Gupta.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. My name is Mackenzie Mossing, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Santa Clara Valley Autobahn Society. You should have received a letter from us yesterday outlining our concerns. Thank you, Commissioner Takahashi. Um, we were alerted to this project because it is just a stone's throw away from our headquarters at McClellan, McClellan Ranch, and it is along the Stevens Creek corridor, which we care deeply about. Uh, many of our members frequent Blackberry Farm. We have our Wildlife Harvest Festival Day there. I was just there this past fall when we had it. I was stationed about thirty feet away from this cliff and watched during the day as rocks and debris would tumble down. And to use your word, Chair, I don't wanna seem ultra crepitarian, but, uh, that cliff does not seem stable to me. Anyways, um, our issue has to do with preserving open space and trees. Uh, we think the density should be reduced and the project footprint reduced to save as many of the coast live oaks on the property as possible, and specifically tree thirty-nine. Um, I went to the site myself, and when I was there, I saw many deer there. I also found scat from bobcat, or not bobcat, coyote, and possibly foxes. So we know wildlife are using that site, so it would be nice to have a little bit of an open space as a buffer along that creek corridor. Um, additionally, the fifty-nine pittasporum trees that are proposed are non-native and should especially not be planted next to a riparian corridor, such a sensitive habitat. So we're hoping that the applicant can replace those with a native species that can offer a canopy, uh, evergreen canopy, uh, for privacy. And then finally, I would like to highlight again the issue of unpermitted tree removal on this site, and, uh, to use your term again, Chair, uh, butchering of some of the other trees. We hope appropriate action will be taken by the city to ameliorate this issue. Uh, we would propose replanting some native oaks along the corridor at a three-to-one ratio. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mossing. Okay, next we have Vishu Gupta, followed by Patrick Kwak.
Uh, hi, my name is Vishu Gupta. I live on one zero two seven zero Scenic. I am the third next-door neighbor from the property. Our property is south of the, uh, lot in consideration. Um, I wanna thank the commission for hearing us out. I really appreciate it. Um, my meta-point is that we're really worried about this construction, because we had a construction on the other side of our house as well in the recent past, and once they got the approval, after giving verbal assurances, they were just not willing to hear us out on anything. And that construction led into, like, conflicts with three of the five neighbors and court case with one of the neighbors as well. Um, we have three main concerns with this construction. Um, number one, uh, privacy, as our house shares the boundary, uh, the, we're on the south side, and will share boundary with two of the lots, parcel three and four, I believe. Um, we want these houses to be not minimum setback, to be further down, um, and bunch of privacy across, uh, along that boundary. Which brings me to my second concern, which is around tree stability. The boundary of our house with this lot had a bunch of really beautiful oak trees, and as we can see here, the developers cut huge branches on their side, um, pretty brutally. I don't know how to turn this on. Um, on their side, which led to now, the trees are leaning towards our side, and I have a second picture to illustrate this thing. Um, in this picture, these are the trees on the boundary. They're all leaning towards our side of the, um, of the boundary, because on that side, there was room to be created to essentially accommodate all these houses. Um, we are really worried about these trees. Based on my interaction with the developer, these trees are healthy, just need some more pruning. But in the report, it says some of these trees need to be removed, actually not just pruned, so I don't know where it nets out, and I don't know how the privacy of this thing will look. And if they're not removed, then I think it's gonna be a conflict with us and with the future owner of these houses, if they're not an imminent threat to our property. Um, last but foremost, um, the parcel four, uh, this is not the one. The parcel four that, that is, uh, under consideration is built on a very steep slope. Um, we shared, uh, that slope with the property in consideration. Um, we did a geological, uh, survey on that property. We paid like some six, seven thousand dollars to get a person to investigate that thing, and they proved that, uh, the activity on Blackberry Farm has also resulted in erosion on that slope. I just cannot imagine a world where a construction happening on that slope won't contribute to erosion on our side and will not lead to slope stability issues for our property.
Fifteen seconds.
Um, and lastly, like, I don't know, unless the developer takes accountability for slope stability on our side for the next ten, twenty, thirty years, I don't know how I can be comfortable with it. I don't know how they can prove that this will not impact slope stability on our house.
Thank you, Mr. Gupta.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have Patrick Kwak, followed by Dennis Gusha.
Chair Paulson, members of City Cap, members of Plan Commission and C, C staff. Uh, my name is Patrick Kwak. I live on the common, uh, row, and the project site is just across the street from my backyard. And I concur with all the speakers about, uh, some of the issues that raised. And, uh, of all the fifty-eight people that show up, even more of those. And I would like to ask the people who is or are actually opposing the project and its plan, could you please stand up? Anyone that is supporting the project? Seeing none. So, uh, neighborhood, uh, community, uh, involvement and relation and building up the labor wood is very, very important. You have all the laborers show up, fifty people in here, some are watching live on TV, and, uh, they are opposing the project. There must be some overriding issues and concerns, uh, that we are not happy with it. So, uh, as far as the drainage, uh, situation is concerned, uh, Mark mentioned about, you know, they have planned. You know, I'm a professional civil engineer. We use the best engineering judgment, but it's not guaranteed, okay? And I don't know how, how, what, what the safety factors you put in there. But there is sure, there's some problem in future point of time. By that time, the design engineers are gone. Uh, the public, uh, that, the, the, uh, the environmental issue currently is at one house, a thousand square feet, uh, with a lot of wooden spaces sitting on one acre. And there's a lot of people, uh, hikers, students, going in, uh, because the project that end into the meadows. And then they use the side, the road down the street, and go to Blackberry Farm and Stevens Creek. So there is a lot of people going in, especially students, uh, using the roads to go to school. So public safety, student safety, uh, hiker safety, uh, very, very important. Uh, we look at the labor wood in there, uh, there's a project actually sitting on, uh, Janus that was built about eight years ago. It's a, a bit less than one acre, on flat acres, low, uh, destructive removal of trees, and is sitting on a, on a street which is Janus, which is almost doubles the size of, uh, uh, Chit, uh, 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 Scenic, the project site. And yet, you know, there's no parking issues, no traffic issues, no safety issues. And in that spot, similar one there, uh, there was only approved, uh, three, uh, houses. You know, uh, I'm sure, uh, they came into the coun, the council, and, and they didn't even come to the council. It's just approved three houses, which is the general without public hearing. So in summary, I just wanna say that there are a lot of concerns about the project, and also the owners reluctant, uh, to step forward and say, hey, you know, we'll take care of the issues. And I hope that you take that into serious considerations, and building the community is very, very important, and we, community members, are gonna stay.
Thank you, former mayor Kwak.
You gotta be happy with the, uh, project. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, our, our last speaker, Dennis, uh, Goshe, Goshe?
Goshe.
Goshe, okay, thank you.
I live at three two oh nine three Stockton Meyer Court. Um, I wanna talk about the road. Scenic Boulevard is both a flyer, a fire and flood evacuation road for nearly thirty homes. Uh, it has blind spots going up and down a steep hill and around a curve. The fire code definitely requires twenty-four-foot clear width, so parking is definitely not allowed on either side of the street. An SUV on both sides would take sixteen feet. A fire truck is ten feet wide by itself. Uh, and I'd like to compliment the city of Cupertino. Streets and traffic departments were taking quick action on that once it was brought to their attention. Uh, they, they got those signs put up very quickly. And, uh, the residents would like to, uh, thank them. I know a lot of residents agree. Uh, and that's the minimum required by law. I support John and Nadine's earlier suggestion of three houses sharing one access road for bicycle and pedestrian safety. My wife and I walk our dog nearly every day and always see a lot of people using this part of Scenic Boulevard. So, to me, everything I've heard, um, there's three things in this project that look bad. The access to the street, there should be one access road, not three. The trees are all, uh, uh, in danger and building on a steep slope. To me, three strikes and they're out.
Thank you. Okay, now is the time for the commission to discuss amongst itself. Commissioners?
I have, uh, maybe two questions, maybe for staff from listening to the speakers. Um, first, the first one is Mr. Tranquil brought up... the first one is Mr. Tranquil brought up something about gutters and the applicants wanting to take care of something. It looked like, sir, you wanted to say something. I just wanted to see if you could say what you wanted to say.
Chad Mosley, again. He walked me out there, and he showed me exactly that corner. And he said, you need to fix this. And so we've done a very careful topographic survey of that corner to idle hide. And we will be fixing it so that the water flows straight down scenic and not into his court.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then my second question is around parking spaces. Is that something that the city staff had asked for, or is it? So first of all, Eric, are there parking along scenic boulevard, a street parking right now? Is that permitted, right, or not permitted?
Right now, it's not. The last speaker mentioned that, kind of going to the parking requirement. So, single-family homes are required to have four parking spaces total, two enclosed, two on the driveway. If they don't have on-street parking, then essentially you're supposed to provide on-street parking as well. So part of the project proposal is to kind of widen out the street a bit, extend the curb and gutter to accommodate parallel parking on that.
Right. So the parking, what you're saying is, it could be on the driveway, or it could be on the street. You have to sort of, certain number of covered spots and certain number of.
Correct. If you don't have on-street parking, you're supposed to provide them, if you don't have on-street parking, provide them off-streets, essentially on the parcel. So that's why on parcel four, there's a parallel parking to accommodate those two parcels.
Okay. And then in terms of, there's an issue about the safety of the, you know, the access roads. And what I've noticed when I've driven there is that it's pretty close to the ridge, but it's not, you can see from the topo map. And so from a safety standpoint, from I guess a traffic engineering standpoint, is it more safe to have these outlets closer to the top of the ridge or further down? Because right now, it looks like we're, I don't know, twenty, thirty, forty, I don't know exactly how far, but it seems like there's, to me, there's a line of sight issue.
I can't speak to specifically which one's better. I do know our traffic engineer did review this, and they didn't have any issues with the layout. Whether or not, that makes a difference, I'm not too sure. But it does go, I think, too, as well as to the number of trips that would be generated. So we do have our environmental consulting here, but the peak AM and PM trips is, you know, a handful.
Sure, right. I remember that. I was more thinking about the placement. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Commissioner Takahashi.
Yeah, just a real quick question. The parking was removed. I assume that was for safety reasons?
Correct. I believe it wasn't wide enough. And so they, with this project, they would widen it a bit more, remove the curb and gutter, kind of.
Right. There's no curb and gutter now. The road's narrower there, but there was parking, parking was not prohibited at that point in time. But then no parking signs went up to prohibit parking there.
Right. It was brought to our attention, kind of, that point, you know, why are we, people parking on the street?
Right, right. So the first speaker's concern, though, was more about speed because of the elimination of those parking spaces, so.
Yeah, this would bring a parking space back, a parking space back.
Right, right, right.
Commissioner Feng?
A question also for staff. So I'm curious, as we're looking today, we're looking at doing a subdivision, and we have kind of examples, you know, examples of what the homes would look like. The geotechnical recommendations for stabilizing the hillside, is that something that's part of the conditions of the subdivision, or is that going to be related to the house plans when they actually, when the specific ones come?
Kind of both. So the part of the subdivision improvements for the site, there'd be retaining walls, and they'll need to stabilize the slope as well. But each individual parcel does, do have retained walls as well. So as they come in, they'll have to do it. So there's kind of big site improvements that need to be done, as well as parcel specific.
Okay. This actually, I bring this up because of the comment from Commissioner Takahashi. You know, because of the larger size of lot four, you know, they could come with a design for a much larger home there. That would be potentially in conflict with any recommendation that was made at this time around the stabilization, or is that unrelated?
If they were to propose another building, or a bigger building, it would be evaluated. So part of our two-story permit process, we look at the parcel, where the placement of the building is. And the applicant would provide a geological study. And that study would get reviewed by staff, myself, Public Works, and our consulting geotechnical person. So we all review it again, and whatever recommendations they have, get incorporated into the plans.
So there's a, there's a specific recommendation that would go with part of the subdivision now. And that has an assumption about the size of the house. Does that become a limitation to the size of the house, or is it sort of limited unless you decide to redo the?
No. I mean, if there's, the improvements may change a bit to accommodate it, but they would have to, again, we'd have to evaluate the home as it comes in.
Okay. And then related to the adlehide, the modification there, is that something that's in the, do we have that as a term of approval? I should probably, I could just look this up.
I'll do check.
That update in the, I would suggest perhaps we consider adding that as a condition.
Yeah.
If it's not.
Yeah. If we're gonna add that as a condition, just to follow up, I would like to see it accommodate a rainfall rate, because that's what generates problems in the foothills, is you get these occasional downpours where the water's just gushing down the curb. So I don't want to get specific. I don't pretend to be a civil engineer, but I think we need to look at engineering for a particular rainfall rate with regard to the.
I agree. I think that, you know, there's an opportunity, since this is a recommendation, they have an opportunity to look at that before it goes to council. Even if it's not, you know, maybe that's something that you want to settle before.
Well, just a condition of approval that it be met with engineering standards. Okay. Commissioner Sun?
I think basically, there's, we hear the community concerns, and then we hear the Commissioner Alan Takahashi's concern, and Commissioner Fang's concern, and Chair's concern. So basically, we're looking for some of the condition. What kind of condition we can discuss right now? On the number four, on the drainage, oh, it's a fire code. And I just want to ask legal counsel, what's kind of a recommendation we can just maybe propose? But generally, when you see the trees, the bond, that's kind of the things I think is a little bit, well, too, a little bit too off, right?
Too harsh.
It seems to me we should, we should voice our opinions with regard to the findings in the resolutions, and make our case for or against. And then from there, we can discuss if there is enough argument from other commissioners to influence that person's opinion, and then bring it to a vote. That's my recommendation.
Yeah, good. Generally, we go through, who start first?
Well, I am intrigued by the consideration of three, three thousand, three hundred square foot homes being economically equivalent to four, twenty-five thousand, five hundred square foot homes. And my question for staff is, are those house sizes consistent with the allowable floor area ratio, or can the builder build larger houses with four houses permitted? In other words, is the twenty-five hundred square foot per house, if there are four houses, except the number four, is that the maximum sort of house size?
Let me turn on approved houses.
In other words, I don't know if those square footages are just pulled out of the air, or are those based on floor area, you know, and lot, lot coverage requirements?
Yeah, okay. Okay, before we go to the more detail, let's see if they have any question for the city staff or for the applicant. I do have one thing that I'm not very, very clear, is regarding the street safety. Because we always set, and from the public comment, there's two different opinions. For the professionals, we don't know whether we are going to encourage a street parking, or it's the, what's the alternatives. We have to make some decisions. We just keep street, yeah.
There are other elements that I think in our discussions will possibly render that point moot, from the standpoint of, you know, if we were to strongly feel that, in agreement with the general neighborhood, for harmony reasons, that three homes is more appropriate, and that there be access to the one driveway, I think all the parking can be accommodated on that one private street. So you really wouldn't need parking on the street at that point in time. Then it's really, I think, the neighborhood's discussion of, is traffic speed a problem, and should calming be applied to the street? So I think it's a good point, but I think it's, it might be secondary, depending on how our discussions go.
Okay, so it's our focus is going to go back to the, in sense of the discussion, whether it's the, this parcel, we can subdivide it from three to five to four, and then that's becoming the key issue. We're looking for is whether we're going to follow the letter of the law, or is the way considered the community's concern.
Exactly. That is the heart of the matter.
So for the, okay, so it's for the personal opinion, I have been with it all the residents here with the chair several times. It's the, I do appreciate every single person I talk to. But for this particular one, and I appreciate the former mayor, Patrick Kwak, is the very passion, very tactic, the move, the speech. But I personally think it's for these particular things, if applicant have a legal right from a five parcel to the four, or even we go back to the original street, we need to find some.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be the findings, right?
Yeah, we have to find some very strong petition to support whatever.
And this is, this is one, I don't think we're gonna have unanimous decision. I can tell that already. So let's just.
We just openly discuss which way we should go there. It's the, I personally think it's between the applicant's interest, whatever the behind intention drive them, either profit or whatever, that they within the legal boundary. But also, I think there's some room we can make compromise with the neighbors and meet all the requirements. So far, it's my understanding, either drainage, or with the privacy, or construction, or the number four lots, that each section, we all can find some rooms to compromise, to meet the requirement. That's the, my understanding. So it's, I personally lean to the, approve the stuff, the application to go that direction. That's my personal opinion.
All right. I'll state my opinion next, if that's okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner Takahashi.
So this, this is from, for me, this is the classic letter of the law versus community harmony. And this is not the first one of these that we've had to deal with. And the one that sticks in my mind is Oakview Drive, I think it was.
Two-story house.
Yes, two-story house.
You remember your comment, yeah.
And I've supported that reluctantly, and I've regretted that decision ever since. So because of that, I feel that from a letter of the law, and looking at exactly seven thousand five hundred square foot lots, with one that's maybe in two feet, clearly, everything was defined to be compliant from the exact letter of the R1 ordinance. The area, I think, where there is some wiggle room, and where I'm siding with the neighborhood, is the neighborhood harmony element. You know, there are a lot of points about street safety. My personal opinion, four houses, three houses, it's not gonna make a difference in the traffic. I don't think traffic is a concern. I really feel like it's, the way the houses are situated, it does push the five-feet spacings, really, I think it does change the flavor and look and feel of the neighborhood. So I'm really more not supporting this project from really a neighborhood harmony perspective. Not because it's two stories, because there's plenty of two-story houses in this one, but clearly, the residents have strong feelings, as noted by all of the speakers. And while compliant to the letter of the law, I don't think it's compliant to the harmony of the neighborhood.
Commissioner Lu?
All right. So I, I've been to the property. I've driven by a couple of times. I haven't had the chance to, I don't think, speak to any of you. Actually, I know I haven't spoken to any of you, but I've gotten, certainly read through the emails and the letters. I think this is, again, you know, one of these issues about, the project is compliant, right, with the regulations. And, but I think we're here to really add that qualitative judgment as to whether or not you go forward with this. Because if you didn't do that, you don't need us up here. You just, we would become code checkers, to basically double-check the math that the staff is doing, right? And so what we bring to the table is a sense of, a lot of the intangibles that make into going into a good neighborhood. I agree with Commissioner Sun that there are going to be compromises, I think, in these different areas, in terms of traffic, and runoff, and trees, and privacy, and all that. I just question whether or not we're able to do that here tonight. This feels to me to be, you know, I guess there's something else I heard earlier about, well, they have a legal right to build five or four or three. I feel they're entitled to build three, because they have three parcels. There is a legal mechanism for them to get to four, but they're not entitled to four. And so for me to think about going from three to four, I ask myself, what is the benefit to the community? And then what are the negatives that you bring to this? I have a number of concerns. I don't necessarily, I think, safety is one. I'm concerned about Tree Thirty-Nine. I don't like the current wording, where it says best effort. If you have a hard problem, and then you tell people, just do the best you can, and whatever, I don't think that cuts it. I don't even want a hundred thousand dollar bond. I want a condition of approval that that tree will be there. Or if it can't be there, then I'd like to better understand more. Anyway, I am not a loquacious person. I'll just sort of stop here. But basically, I agree with Commissioner Takahashi. At this point, I don't feel like I can support this project in its current form. Thank you.
Commissioner Feng?
You know where this is going. Okay. So I think in hearing the comments tonight, I'm concerned that the responsiveness of the applicant to try to address some of the concerns has not been really great. And I think that's unfortunate. However, I probably would tend to side with Commissioner Sun with regard to, you know, we have technical zoning requirements. The application is compliant with those, and I don't see a reason that we shouldn't allow it. I think, you know, with some of the additions that we, we've discussed around things like the adlehide adjustment, trying to look at, I mean, I think it would be interesting, so I actually was out at the site today. I do recognize the, I happened to meet with one of your neighbors who's not here tonight. I do recognize the issue for people coming up out of the lower part of the street, you know, whether there's an opportunity to do something like, I don't know, a mirror or something, you know, a wide ankle mirror at the driveway. I think that, I'm concerned that there was, I really didn't hear a very compelling answer about what was really gonna happen with the tree. I don't really see any way that it could be saved. There wasn't really no discussion about what actions you could take that would preserve it in that location as it's, as it's proposed. So, you know, and then I think, I think there is also a concern, you know, I do have a concern about the size, size restrictions on parcel four, and that actually is, in some respects, true on all the parcels. So I think that where I'm kind of sitting on this is that I believe that I would support the application as has today. With those reservations, I hope that the applicant, you know, they have a long process ahead. Even if we were to grant this subdivision, they have a long process ahead in designing the homes. Those are not set in concrete. So if there are opportunities to address some of the issues around setbacks, preserving, preserving trees, or doing things that will make it more harmonious to the neighborhood, I'd like to see, you know, I'd hope that those things would be, that they would try to pursue that path, and try to have a more productive discussion with the community. But. But...
Well, this is interesting. We have two to two.
Commissioner Wethervein.
We had a Commissioners Academy last week, and the last day, we had a skit about a dysfunctional city where one of the Commissioners was named Commissioner Wethervein, because he changed his vote whichever way the wind blew. So, I, I've spent a lot of time at the, at the parcel with the residents and by myself, sitting under the tree and, and thinking and looking around and, and I feel for the neighbors. I feel for the, the tree, the site, the steepness of that slope. I don't think that it should be given to the city, because I don't want the city to have to absorb the liability of that erosion continuing to creep back as we've measured it since 1907. However, if we restrict this to three homes and let the developer keep the whole parcel with the responsibility for stabilizing that slope, which would come with a development plan, then that's what I would favor. So, I think we got three to two. Any other discussion? With a three to two for three, three lots.
Right, so three nays on the proposal.
Three nays on the proposal and two, as the report recommends.
Commissioners, Commissioners, if I may, just on a matter of technicality, I noticed some discussion about harmony. Harmony technically is not one of the criteria for tentative map subdivisions. So, if you look at your application under TM, the resolution, there's six criteria. So, if you are leaning towards your decision, you will have to find at least one of those six to be inconsistent and incompatible. So, I just wanna bring that out there before you make your decision.
Okay. Commissioner Sun has one. This is not done yet, I don't think. Commissioner Sun, go ahead.
Yeah, it's okay. It's the, whatever the, the decision we make is we truly make a decision based on the, whatever is our judgment. The thing is, one, a little bit different with the reasoning of Commissioner Alan Takahashi's reasoning. From beginning to the end, most base or reasoning, the standing is based on the community harmony. It's the, we, everyone, single person in here, we outreach, try to reach the community harmony. That's no problem. This afternoon, I play with the golf with the Joe and, and together. We are ten years of friendship, but on this decision, it's the, not only based on the community harmony decision only. So, it's the, we have to find very concrete, objective standard to make our decision. This decision, we're going to make sure it's sustainable. But I insist the, the one, the decision we make, and my observation after listening to everyone's opinion, I think there's some room, we can make it, to make sure that the applicant meet the legal requirement at the same time to make the community satisfied from all their questions here. It's the, I believe there's some room, so we can make it, and also, it's the, don't ask applicant to appeal based on the legal ground to the city council. That's the major, my concern. I know it's from a presentation of applicant, they, they're very weak on the presentation, and very weak on the present their ideas, outreach. There's so many things compared with the one person, two person, compared with many residents, neighbors. That's the, we don't want to make judgment solely based on the, there's so many my friend there, former mayor there, and the will present, presentation. But I think it's the, through the, we impose some condition. For example, we impose the number four, there's no future expansion, the tree 39 and other the street, the expansion or restriction. We may find some way, it's the, go through. But it's okay. It's the three to two or two to three, doesn't matter for us, but we just try to reach the deliberate decision to make sure it's, every decision will make it fair. And the only things that I want to present here and want to emphasize is the disagreement with my fellow Commissioner Alan Takahashi, is, he's based on the community harmony. It's the, that's the, I know it's so many people coming here to voice their concern, but that's the, not the concrete, objective, legal standing for us to make judgment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'm looking at the findings here. So, I guess number four, environmental impact. I think everyone, it, it's my sense that people agree that tree 39 is an asset to the community. I even, that's a sense I get from, you know, the applicant and the fact that we want to try to save it. And, and I think this sort of best effort thing, I'm not comfortable with that. You know, Commissioner Sun, I, I agree with you that there are, you know, if you break this down, there are these compromises to be, to be made, that I think, perhaps a set of conversations that, sounds like that hasn't been really had with the community. I just question whether or not we can do it up here on the dais, you know, because it, it, it just feels like there's so many issues. And I'm hoping that if we do not recommend this going forward, that this will provide perhaps some, I don't know, encouragement for better engagement on both sides. But for me, I think, you know, certainly finding number four in terms of the environmental damage, and then finding number three, whether this site...
I wasn't gonna go with three.
I'll let you, I'll, I'll yield the floor then, please.
Yeah, I was finding three in terms of the physical suitability for the intensity of the development, contemplated the approved subdivision. I think there's concerns with regard to the slope on parcel four. And then my other issue is, is my original question, which is potential future expansion of a secondary dwelling unit and/or just the fact that the, the houses are going to be a secondary element, and their actual size and scale could be even larger. So, that's, that's what I'm, that's the finding I'm, I am not going to agree with.
You know, if this were a flat lot, I would vote for four, no problem. But it's not a flat lot. And there's sometimes, I grew up in the hills, I grew up on a Frank Lloyd Wright house that was built into the hillside without excessive grading and, and cutting and filling and that kind of thing. And he was known for building with the land. And like I said, I spent a lot of time, and in a way, I don't wanna sound weird or anything, but you can kind of listen to the land and you can look at the shape, and you can respond to the forms that are already there. And yes, you can modify them, yes, you can build anything. But have we seen in the Oroville Dam and in the attempts to reshape the Mississippi River and other things, nature has a way of choosing its natural course. And if you build on a steep slope, you are risking going against the very forces of nature. You can do it, it may last a while, but eventually, the retaining walls may crack, the foundations may shift, and I've seen houses actually slide down hills. I'm not saying that the engineers are incompetent, but I'm just saying that there are forces there on that slope that I think would best be left alone. So, that's why I'm gonna support three rather than four. It's, the, the community feeling is strong. The developer, I would categorize as incompetent in, in the public outreach. And, and the last, late notice of meetings, the lateness of the meetings, the unwillingness or inability to respond to concerns at the meetings, so that there's really no discussion with the community. There was only a developer wanting to say what he or she wanted to say and was not seriously willing to take into account the neighbor's concerns. Reputation is important in a city like Cupertino, and as we've seen with other developers, reputation can influence public opinion for decades. And, and so, this is an important matter, but also, again, the shape of the land is an important issue. So, that's why I'm gonna be Commissioner Wethervein and, and say that this, the developer should own everything, including the responsibility for the erosion, but should really avoid building on that steep slope.
I guess, so just, so I have a, a bit of a concern that harmony is certainly desirable, but it is somewhat ephemeral. You know, so...
So, if, if a project is compliant...
Yeah.
...with regard to the R1 ordinance, which I think there's, I still have some question because of the fact that, because this was the exact same element. And the, to Commissioner Liu's point, why are we here? As long as they can demonstrate compliance, there's, there's absolutely no reason for us to, to, to voice our opinions or to, to support it. I mean, we're, we're rubber stamped. So, this is where I think the public meeting and the process itself lends value from the standpoint of us rendering a decision.
So, I largely agree, that'll be part of that is that this decision comes here because it causes us to have a, you know, to have a, a public hearing.
Right.
Which would not happen if it were, you know, a counter decision. So, you know, I, I just, I just, I, I'm concerned because if it is a matter of, you know, of harmony, of concern about setback, that the same issue will, you know, you could, you can move the setback back two more feet, and there will still be people who are not, who will not be happy, right? Because given the choice between nothing being developed there and, and, and a house, you know, that, you know, that, that will be an issue.
Right. And I think we're not talking black and white necessarily. We're talking black and white for this specific application as written and what we're, what we're going to vote on. But I don't think that, that necessarily precludes a solution that, that is in the best interest of everybody, which I think some recommendations have been brought forward that, that do make some sense, and the economic viability looks to make sense as well. So, you know, from that regard, you know, we're not, we're not killing development on this lot.
No, I understand. I understand. As I was looking around the neighborhood, you know, there are, there are a mix of homes there, some of which are very new.
Yeah.
And when those houses were, you know, remodeled to the condition that they are now, I'm sure that they went exactly to the extent allowed by the zoning, as we see in so many cases. So, you know, and there would have been the same issue of harmony at that, at that point.
Right. And that's, that's the point that I made on my initial closing comments, was the, the one particular project that pushed every limit and was compliant, and yet you had an outpouring of neighbors that, that really felt that that's what was happening and that that builder was just completely maximizing the, the value of the property, which, which is something that, that we try to take into account with regard to private property ownership as, as a planning commission. But, you know, one of the speakers was, was, was more calm, and really just felt that this project was, was disruptive. More so, I think more so than even, there, there weren't as many speakers, but, but the passion in the speakers that were there was, was, was a little stronger. And it's, it struck me as, and, and from that point is, is when I felt that there were flaws in the R1 ordinance as written, such that, and, and there was some, some movement with regard to single-story overlays and to address second-story additions and their disruptiveness in a mostly single-story neighborhood. But nonetheless, that's, that's kind of been my perspective since that meeting and after, you know, kind of reflecting on that moment and supporting that, regretting that, and then just in terms of the findings, that's, that's kind of where I'm going.
Well, unlike my wise and experienced colleagues, I've only been a Commissioner for three years, but I do remember a project where there was a magnificent French chateau proposed in the hills, and we voted unanimously to cut it down, change the shape and the form and the, the height because of neighbor concern. Perhaps we've discussed this enough. I think we're pretty well clear. I, I did talk with a, a planner last week with decades of experience, and I boasted about how we often have consensus on this commission. He said, "Well, a three to two vote has its advantage also." So, unless there's further discussion, I would like to call for a vote. Are we ready?
Well, we need to make a motion.
Oh, okay, make a motion, sorry.
Since I'm gonna vote for it, I'll, I'm happy to do that. Let's see, I, I moved that we adopt draft resolution EA 201504, draft resolution TM 201501, TR and TR 2016-28. I think that we probably would also agree about adding a condition of approval related to Adlehide Road, the drainage improvements to Adlehide Road. It's up to you as to whether we do that or not, because I don't think it's gonna matter.
Well, could we, could we make a, a motion to approve it, but amend it to make three homes rather than four? Or is that, what's best counsel, to vote against the motion or to modify it to have three?
Again, on more of a technicality, like I was trying to say before, if you are recommending changes to, to the project, I think what Commissioner Liu and Takahashi was attempting to, to do so is, is on one of the six criteria that you have to state which one is inconsistent with. And you, we appreciate staff level to give us very detailed description of why it's inconsistent, so we can craft the language for you. In terms of environmental and, and the tree issue, if the tree is mitigated, then there's no environmental issue because it's mitigated. So, you have to kind of focus on a couple of items or come up with a different reason. So, but we appreciate some detail, so we can craft the language appropriately. Thank you.
So, you wanna take that, you want to, I mean, it won't be coming from you, but you wanna take that input after we make the motion before we vote?
Before you vote, because you'd be voting on that recommendation.
Well, but, but the recommendation, is that going to include, you, would you like the recommendation to include term, words related to the, the conditions, the position on conditions?
Perhaps it's easier just to propose or make a motion to vote on the, the resolution as, as given to us, okay?
Yeah.
So, do you wanna...
One, one explanation is, my understanding is, city staff, they require, before we cast it or vote, they require the, the Commissioners, they, they are going to vote for in, and it's going to give a little bit of explanation based on the, the criteria, so they can summarize the document.
So, I'm sorry, so if I may, just a procedural point, it looks like the motion before you that is about to be moved is to approve this project and application, so I think you need to proceed with that vote, and then if there's an alternative motion that would go into denying this application, then what staff is asking is that you identify the, the alternative findings essentially, that you're relying on.
Okay.
Why don't you go ahead with your, with your motion, Commissioner Feng?
Okay, well, so, yeah, no conditions, as the, the three resolutions as presented in the packet.
Okay. Are you ready to vote?
I think we hit it too quick.
Okay, and the motion fails three to two. Next item on the agenda, is that, or do we need to discuss this any, anymore?
You need an alternate motion.
An alternate.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I don't understand. So, we, the motion doesn't pass, so we need an alternative motion?
Well, yes, so, motion doesn't pass, but you need a reason why now...
Sure.
...as part of recommendation.
Okay.
Because the way the written, the motion's written, project meets the criteria. So, if you find that the project does not meet any of the six criteria, you will have to stay so.
All right. So, I find that the, from my perspective, finding number three, that the site is physically suitable for the intensity of the development. I feel that this site is more suitable for sort of three parcels, and, you know, there are not, we can go into parking and trees and all that. I don't know if you need that level of detail at this, at this moment, but that's my perspective.
I think more detail is better, if you're stating that a site is more suitable for three parcels.
All right, I'd like to see if there's a site plan that can preserve tree 39 rather than mitigating it. I think there are concerns about on-street parking. I'd like to see if that can be brought onto the property. There's been concerns about basically a number of accesses into scenic boulevard, with, in agreement that there should be, if I look at the development, south of scenic boulevard, they've all been served, all the... they've all been served, all the residences are being served by a common road. I'd like to see that pattern also. And I'll yield the floor to my colleagues so I don't hog the microphone. Thank you.
Also, I would like to see no building on the steep slope, but building on the level part only. That's, that's, that's a, both a, a design and a site physical aspect. Are we ready to vote on this? Do you want to make a motion?
Sorry, Commissioner Paulson, can you, can you state your last?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that the, the site is not physically suitable for the intensity because it, it would seek to build on that steep slope and that the design is not unlikely to cause environmental damage. In other words, it would, it would eliminate that oak tree, it would cause a lot of grading and, and work on that steep slope, which I think is best mitigated naturally with, with just planting and leave that alone with no retaining walls and whatnot. So those two things, physical suitability and, and the design that would want to build on a, a steep slope. So do we make a motion to that or?
I don't.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion. Do you want to make a motion, Commissioner Lou?
Sure, I, I move that we recommend to the staff the aforementioned set of comments by myself and Commissioner Paulson.
Okay. Help us then, procedurally.
So if you, your motion, the alternative motion, since the first motion did not pass, would be a motion to deny the application as proposed to you?
Default denied by the fact that we voted three to two.
Well, in part because you need findings that are alternative findings to support your record and your decision.
Okay, well then.
So I withdraw what I just said and I'll just go ahead and make a motion to deny this application based on the aforementioned findings.
Okay. Okay.
Wait, I think we need a second. Is someone second my motion?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cancel. Cancel, okay. I'm gonna put next item and then we'll, we'll do the vote again. Sorry.
Can we clear it?
How do we cancel vote? Save vote? There's no clear vote on this. How do I clear the?
Well, you can just wait.
Wait?
Meaning, unless one of us changes our mind. So I second Commissioner Lou's motion.
All right, so we're ready to vote on that then? Okay. Yeah. I don't know how to clear the half-baked premature vote. That's what I'm saying. We have a, a technical issue here. Any help from staff on this?
Can each person do it?
No, we can't.
Okay, can we just do a roll call? Staff, just do a roll call.
Somebody second it, please.
I second the motion.
So, so on the, on the motion and second with the justification for finding number three, I have a roll call. Commissioner Lou?
Aye.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Aye.
Commissioner Paulson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sun?
Just to pretend, right?
Yes.
Aye. Right? Are, are we going to?
You're voting, you're voting for the denial with the recommendation that a project does not meet criteria number three.
No.
Okay. Commissioner Fong?
No.
Okay. The motion passed three to.
Okay, where are we? That is item number three. Any old business, staff? Okay, any new business? Okay. Staff and commission reports? Okay.
Reports.
All right, then I hereby adjourn the meeting. What?
I think we have, we're commission reports.
Oh, commission report, sorry.
Good save.
We went to, we went to, to a, one of commissioners', the, academy, yes, which was great.
Thank you. Do you, do you want to raise the issue around speakers? I saw you write something down. I'll raise the issue. So we, we did something unusual tonight with regard to allowing speakers, multiple speakers and representatives. I'd like to suggest to the staff that for, for a future meeting, that we make a resolution around the policy, formalizing a policy for that. I'd like to see, you know, on a limited basis, maybe it's possible to have somebody speak on behalf of multiple people, but to perhaps do something like limit that to two people's worth of time.
Yeah.
Or, or, you know, of course, you always, you always have the opportunity of a large group of people that the entire group can show up. But I think that that would be, you know, simpler and more efficient.
When they paired up, I gave them six minutes, you know, two persons' time.
But the, part of, part of managing that, and, you know, this is the challenge of part of managing that is you don't know that, you don't know that somebody in a group, a large group, isn't going to come up and then speak later.
Right.
If I may, what I can tell you in terms of the legal aspect of it under the Brown Act and the Public Records Act and all those statutes, what typically cities do is if you have a lot of speakers on one side or the other, you can have a rule, and I agree with you, it might be a good idea, but the person that is, wants to speak on behalf of others, those other people should have already submitted a speaker's card, which is what we, you know, I didn't manage to, to tell you that. That way you can verify that these people are here.
Yeah.
In terms of giving them the full time, you don't need to do that, you can just cut it in half.
Okay.
And to reflect, it might help when you have a lot of speakers, but I agree that having a rule in place is, is appropriate.
Okay. The council doesn't have, there's no.
Okay. Well, I do have the names on the cards. It wasn't just one name.
Excellent. Right, and you can ask who are you speaking on behalf of.
Okay. That's the, basically, it's the, we just discovered that the situation like this, it's the people just find the best speaker standing at the podium and just say, "Oh, we have so many people coming here, I'm going to use certain people's name." Some people with the card, most people, they don't have a card.
Right, but if they had a card and then they, they were behind the speaker, you, you would have physical substantiation that.
Yes, yes.
Because in theory, somebody could submit multiple cards and put names and then I have nine minutes.
Yeah, even, even they have a five people, they all coming here, they all filling card at the chair, you still have a time to limit it. Now that the five times, three, fifteen minutes, you still have to say, "Oh," it's the, if you present five people, I don't give you fifteen minutes, I probably gave you ten minutes maximum. So it's, that's still okay. Otherwise, you allow every single person, if they submit a card, they're just coming here to say something. That's the more respect, more reflect the public opinion. Because each, everyone say, they all say something from their heart. One people say they are very, technically, they are good speaker, so most people, they don't know is whether they truly present them or not.
This is not really, you know, related to any, you know, I thought the speakers were fine tonight and I don't believe there was an issue, but I think that having a policy, so I, I think we don't need to craft a, you know, in fact, we can't craft a policy, but if you could maybe bring a recommendation about what is done.
Recommendations, yeah.
You know, I don't think the council actually has a, a formal policy, although they generally don't allow grouped speakers like that.
We, we can confirm and bring something back to you at the next meeting.
If you could do that would be fantastic.
Absolutely.
Great.